Two. One. Bear with me. Go ahead.
Thank you, Peter. This is Ray Woldy of the Lower Southampton Township Board of Supervisors. Welcome to the public meeting of the Lower Southampton Township Board of Supervisors for Wednesday, March 10th, 2021 at 7:30 PM. Right now I have 7:42 PM. The meeting is being held via teleconference and was advertised as such. If we could begin the meeting by everyone standing for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of America and to the Republic where we should stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, just as it is. Thank you. Before tonight's public meeting, the board met at 6:00 PM for an executive session. The executive session lasted from 6:00 PM until immediately before this meeting. During the executive session, the board focused on three issues. One was a personnel issue that had to do with a pension. Received an update from an attorney. The second was another personnel issue that we'll address later in a meeting. And a third was suggested salaries and raises for department heads and some township employees, which we'll also address later. That being said, the first thing on tonight's agenda would be public comment. The public was invited to send her comment in at the email address, publiccomment@lowersouthampton@lstownship.org. Either Joe or Christina, is there anything to be read into the record?
Board Chair, there are two. I'll start with the first one. It's a Mr. Pat Anderson. I don't believe Pat has submitted an address, but his comments are the following. Why can't Somerton Pool, Maplewood Pool, and Lower Makefield Pool open, and yet there seems to be problems opening the Dolphin Pool? Please explain this, thank you. That was the one question. The next one is from a Mr. Hank Booth, H Springfield, PA. Since September 2020, invoices with a law firm of Genova Burns and Begley, Carlin, and Mandio have been submitted for legal services rendered involving litigation concerning a former township employee. At September, at the September 9th meeting, the invoice for Genova Burns was separated from the consent agenda requested by Mr. Kuteradis because it was a personnel issue. Mr. Kuteradis then queried why the bill is not being paid or getting paid. Mr. Kuteradis replied that there wasn't much he can say because it was a personnel issue that he would talk to Mr. Shannon privately. When those invoices have been subsequently submitted to the board for approval, two supervisors consistently voted nay to disperse the funds. I agree that litigation is a personnel matter, however, voting for payment is not. Under Section 5 of the Township Supervisor's Handbook, all supervisors of the board have a financial responsibility to see that all bills are paid. Refusal to pay exposes the township to lawsuit in addition to damaging the township's credit rating. I would like to know why Mr. Kuteradis and Ms. Cummings are voting for nonpayment for services rendered. That's all for public comment.
Thank you, Joe. I mean, as far as the pools go, I think we're set to discuss the pools tonight and the pool contract and our plans for 2021 with the Dolphin Pool. I can't say anything about number two. I don't know if anyone wants to. Pardon me?
There's no requirement to respond. A question was asked. Susan and Kent will have to respond.
Okay. She, and that's it for public comment, Joe?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Since there's no further public comment, we'll move on to the first item on the agenda. The first item is the consent agenda. The consent agenda, Item 1A, approval of the minutes from February 24th, 2021. Item 1B, approval of accounts payable, March 10th, 2021. Item 1C, approval of certain reoccurring monthly bills, March 10th, 2021. Would anyone like to make a motion to about the consent agenda?
Mr. Woldy, real quick question. I just want to make sure that there's no, I do see one Genova and Burns payable for litigation. I just want to make sure it doesn't have anything to do with the Ottinger lawsuit.
Peter, I think there was.
I just want to make sure it doesn't.
It doesn't say it in the payables, but I think there was a comment from when we got the payables in an email that it did not have anything to do with that litigation.
Okay. I don't recall seeing that email. Can we just confirm that? Then I'd be fine with everything.
Peter, do you recall that?
This accounts payable for March 10th does not include the case that Mr. Kuteradis is referring to.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Peter. Thank you, Ray.
You're welcome. Would anyone like to make a motion involving the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
What's your motion to?
To approve the accounts payable.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second that, Ray. This is Susan.
Thank you, Ms. Cummings. And as usual, on the virtual meetings, we'll go down, do a roll call vote alphabetically. Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Kuteradis?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. Ray Woldy, I vote yes. The motion to approve the consent agenda passes 5-0. Item two on the agenda is an update from the Youth Advisory Council. Ms. Kaplan and I sat in on a meeting with the Youth Advisory Council last Thursday evening, I believe, and they have some big plans. And in that meeting, Mr. Joe Fiaco asked if he could address the Board of Supervisors at tonight's meeting about their upcoming plans and some initiatives that they have planned. So, Joe, if you're here, I'll turn it over to you.
Oh, maybe he's muted.
Joe, you're muted? Please unmute yourself. He is in the attendance.
His picture was up earlier. I don't know where he went.
He's down here at the bottom, but his microphone's off.
I'm making more phone calls tonight than.
Thanks, Frank.
About time you started to do something.
He's not answering. No, there he is.
Okay.
It's the Fiaco. You have to unmute yourself. You're muted right now.
He is talking.
He's been muted right now. That's what it is.
Yeah. Joe, can you hear us? Joe Fiaco? You're muted. If you're muted, if you can turn your microphone on somehow.
Hit the screen and it should pop up.
There's a little microphone on your screen, either center of your screen or to right top of your screen. You have to hit the microphone to speak. You are muted right now.
Is he looking out of the table?
Call me now.
He sounds like me. Somebody's cutting their nails.
Well, why don't you try this? Speak, Joe. See if the board can hear you.
Can you hear me through, Frank's?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. I always get a lot of feedback anyway, and now I have a delay. But thanks for the introduction, Ray. And Debbie, thanks for attending the March 4th meeting. This is brutal. We have been working with the, I don't think I can do this. There's way too much delay.
We can hear you.
We hear you fine.
My brain can't come. Let me. I'm going to turn the volume down so I don't hear myself in a delayed manner. So, thanks.
Can you look at your computer screen?
And this is an organization that covers the entire Nishamity School geographical area, and they are doing some wonderful things to help our young people to avoid the pitfalls of drug addiction and a lot of the early on kind of triggers to get to that, you know, smoking and vaping and things of that nature. So, on January 28th and February 25th, we had a joint Zoom meeting with members of the Nishamity Coalition for Youth, and they were basically introducing to us a number of things that have been going on, and we were very excited about being able to help them, help the youth in Lower Southampton with their efforts. And with that, I'm holding up a brochure that the Nishamity School District has approved to hand out to the students in the district, and it is basically a call for students to get involved, and it's a podcasting effort, and it's going to be pretty much run by the students with some oversight by adults. Am I coming through pretty clear?
Yes.
Yes.
If the board allows me, I'm just going to read the, I think it would be helpful if I just read the announcement and then the public can hear it as well, so you know what it's saying. The Nishamity Coalition for Youth, NC4Youth, a teen podcasting, few things are more important to families, schools, and communities than helping kids thrive and protecting their health and welfare. Who better to help deliver this message than our teens? Podcasting gives teens a voice. NC4Youth, a drug-free, community-support, grant-funded, community-prevention coalition, is seeking teens for a youth-led, adult-guided podcast initiative. NC4Youth teen podcasters will have the opportunity to meet with and interview individuals in our community that promote the above goals. Teens will be involved with all aspects of podcasts, including making decisions about whom would be interviewed and how the podcast shall be directed and produced. Podcasts will be scheduled monthly. All podcast production equipment, microphones, headsets, editing software, and training will be provided by NC4Youth. Computers are not included. All aspects of podcasts, including training, production, and interviews, will be done virtually until a return to in-person meetings are deemed safe. Eligible teens must be in grade level seven through 12 and either live or attend schools in the area of Lower Southampton Township, Pendell, Langhorne, Langhorne Manor, Middletown, and Humeville Borough. Adult supervision will be provided by NC4Youth. All adult supervisors have their background check clearances as required by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Teen podcast needs include podcast host interviewers, podcast technical editors, podcast producers, and directors. Everyone is welcome, especially we have a need for those who have interest in a public health career, interest in journalism and writing, interest in broadcasting, social media knowledge with Twitter and Instagram. Spent its to involvement is the community service hours, strengthen college and job applications, and learn new skills and have fun doing it. And then there's some contact information for those students that are interested. So, I'm very excited about this opportunity. I'm hoping we get a lot of involvement of our youth, and the way it's going to be set up, we can't have too many involved. They're going to break them down into managing groups of about eight or less. So, no matter how many people are interested, there will be opportunities for our youth to get involved. So, I'm excited about that, and I wanted to basically ask the balance of the Board of Supervisors, Ray and Deb were aware of this, to indicate their support for this as we, we, the Lower Southampton Youth Advisory Council, join efforts with the Nishamity Coalition for Youth for these efforts.
Well, you did want the township to make 1,000 copies of the flyers. Is that correct?
Yes, the township made the copies. I believe Carol Drioli has them, and we will be delivering them to the Proquesting Middle School, which is the only school in Lower South that, you know, fits this description. And we were just waiting for the Board of Supervisors to give concurrence that we can do that.
So, you already received the flyers from the township? Is that what you said?
The flyers were received by the NC4Youth, the organization that's actually running it. Again, it's already been run by the Nishamity School District because that's where Lower South was kind of like a missing link on the Nishamity Coalition for Youth efforts, so.
Now, I mean, the thousand copies, didn't you want to ask the township to make 1,000 copies for the Youth Advisory Council?
Yes, please.
I just wanted to go back to the board to know what your request was.
Okay.
And Joe, then these copies will be distributed to what, to three middle schools, Sandburg, Maple Point, and Proquesting, and at the high school?
Now, the only request we are asking you for is copies that can be distributed to Proquesting Middle School. Copies are already going to be going to the other schools because they fall outside of Lower Southampton Township.
Okay. And that would be then only the seventh and eighth grader of Proquesting? Because it's a seven to 12 initiative?
Seven to 12 is the group.
Okay.
Joe, is there a connection between Middletown and Lower South for the Youth Advisory? Is this going to be a joint effort?
No, actually, it's an effort by the Nishamity Coalition for Youth. This is an organization that was formed a few years back, and they have a lot of very similar desires for helping our youth that we have had, and they have some very educated and well-versed professionals that are involved, and they actually have funding, they have received a five-year grant from this, I believe it's from the state. It might even be a federal grant, but it's funding for five years for their efforts to try and get our youth to stop, you know, the different triggers of addiction. So, whether it's getting them to not start smoking or quit smoking, or getting them to not vape, get obviously opioids and things of that nature. So, the best thing I can compare it to is the Mothers Against Drunk Driving when. It's acceptable to be drinking and driving as it is today. It took many, many years. So, the Nishamity Coalition for Youth is trying to get these initial efforts on the ground to make our youth aware of how hazardous and deadly it is to start using drugs, whether it's nicotine or alcohol or vaping. So, this is a program that they are working and they have funded. Our group wants to support them in any way we can.
So, what do you want? A motion from the board to allow the 1,000 copies to be made?
I didn't realize that that was necessary. I thought I was, you know, basically making you aware of this, getting your support for it, so that when we provide these copies to the school, then it's with the knowledge of the Board of Supervisors that they endorse it. And if they don't, by all means, let me know, and then we'll do what we need to do as far as that's concerned. I didn't think 1,000 copies of flyers. If you guys were endorsing it, I didn't think making copies at the township level was the level that we needed to get a vote on approval by the Board of Supervisors. But if that's the case, by all means, that's what I am formally requesting.
Right.
The YAC is a subsidiary board of the Board of Supervisors, so I'm not sure we, I don't know, Frank, do we have to have a motion or if any of the group member wants to weigh in, whether they support it or not?
Well, no, I just wasn't sure what Joe was looking for. So, I think the board, is Joe adding a motion?
Well.
I was just asking for verbal support from the Board of Supervisors of this effort that is already being undertaken in Nishamity, and we're hoping to get Proquesting involved with the balance of the Nishamity School District in what I think is a very exciting opportunity for our youth to get involved in helping themselves.
So, somebody say yes.
I definitely support you.
I'm fine with it. I'm great with it.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I'm fine with it too, and if the school, if the township doesn't want to do it, I'll do it.
Well, what I'm not clear right now is, do you have the 1,000 copies in your possession of the flyers as we speak?
I personally don't. I thought Carol may have had them. If not, she's going to handle that chore for the Youth Advisory Council. And I believe the intent is to deliver them on Friday if the supervisor tells us not to.
No, no. What I did was I asked Joe to do a cost analysis on how much it would cost for the township to print, because they're colored flyers, how much it would cost the township to print the 1,000 copies versus a printer to print the 1,000 copies of the colored flyers. Were you able to get that information, Joe?
I have no idea.
No, no. Joe Galdo, are you able to get that information?
Deb, from what I was told, we are receipt of it. We have not really produced the copies yet, and from what I also understand, the copies to be made are in black and white. Either way, we could do the color format or we could do the black and white. The estimated cost should only be anywhere from maybe $100. If it's a little bit more than 100, that's all the expenditure that you're going to have on this.
Okay. We were told they were going to be colored. If that's, is that correct, Joe? I'm sorry. That was the request at the meeting, correct? That we had Thursday night that you wanted the flyers in color. I just want everybody to know what they're doing here.
Yes, we're hoping to get color copies.
That's what I thought. Okay.
And then we'll produce color copies for you, sir. Not a problem, Joe.
Which is really, there's not that much color in them, but.
Not a problem.
Thanks.
Again, the cost is the minimalist. It's basically maybe a little bit over 100. It's not an issue.
Okay, very good.
Joe, when are you looking to obtain those copies by? I know, Tom, you're up against the wall on time.
He said Friday.
Deliver them on Friday.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Joe.
Frank, thanks for the use of your phone.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you for giving your attention. Thank you.
Hey, Joe, thanks.
Moving on, item number three on the agenda is consider awarding the 2021 pool contracts for the Dolphin Swim Club and Fertivar Pool.
There's been some modifications, I think.
There have been.
From the original contract that we talked about, and I know there's some additional information that Matt has. I don't know who else has the information.
I think Frank, either Frank and/or Matt, if Matt's in here, or if not, then Frank. Okay.
So. I talked to Matt about it, and Matt can address it. There's the standard contract, which they were willing to change. They added addendum pages, which you see, which are attached to part of Exhibit Three, basically canceling it by April 15th if you want out. And if the government shuts us down, we can get out of the contract at that point, but we get reimbursed for lifeguard hours, pool labor, and lab testing. So, and I also had Matt get the automatic renewal clause removed. I think it was clause 18. So, I'm sorry for interrupting. You can take over.
Yeah, I was going to address the same topics. I know one of the other big issues was the fee schedule had a lot in the front. There was a large payment scheduled for April, and then through May, June, July, with a smaller payment in August. I think they met us in the middle on that request, and they've spread it out to five even payments. We also considered pushing back the start date of the contract to closer to when the, you know, the kids are out of school and summer camp will be beginning, right at that June, Saturday, June 19th, which shows a pretty significant savings of almost $7,000. Other than that, the consistencies, which were Part 16 and Part 14, are both addressed in the addendum, and, you know, unless the board has any questions for me, it would be my recommendation to move forward with the pool contract for Dolphin Swim Club and the Fertivar Pool.
I have a question, Matt.
Yep.
And I know I read the email from the Bucks County Department of Health that no matter where the pool is located, still have to follow the governor's guidelines as far as capacity, allowed capacity. So, if there is a limited capacity, will the pool be able to sustain itself just being fiscally responsible?
Yep, that's a good question. And I did send these out to the supervisors regarding indoor/outdoor pool operations and just the guidance, preliminary guidance from the Department of Health. Me and everyone who I've talked to in the pool community sees this as a step, a huge step in the right direction. I'm confident that it's something that we can execute safely and execute fiscally responsibly. You know, there will be some additional, you know, costs that we already anticipated in the way of signage and elevated sanitization, and it's definitely something that I think by those summer months, if you saw the body of the email from the representative from the Department of Health, it projects that we will be permitted to operate within those guidelines, yes.
Well, we have to check back in May to see what the capacity is going to be according to the email. So, if the capacity is 50%, just putting that number out there, because we won't know till May. If the capacity, just for an example, is 50%, will the pool be able to sustain itself with that capacity percentage? That's what my question is.
Yes, we would be able to. It would be a blended financial picture. It would have a summer camp component, which would contribute to the expenses of the pool. It would also have season passes and guests of season. It would also have season passes and guests of season pass holders as another revenue source. Prelimarily, I'm already thinking it probably is not going to be the best summer for pool parties or movie nights. So the other programming revenue wouldn't play into that, but I'm pretty confident that we could execute a fiscally responsible 2021 pool season. I don't think we're going to set any records, but it would be something that we could execute, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other members' questions or comments?
Not at the moment.
Yeah, I think the township's in a lot better shape with this revised contract than we were a few weeks ago with the other contract. I mean, at least we have some protection should things go downhill as far as restrictions that are COVID related.
And one other note real quick, Mr. Chair, you know, it still has the cancellation for April 15th, which is more than a month from now. Over that time, it'll give me the opportunity to come back to you with a financial projection. Obviously, the projections that are in the 2021 budget. I have, you know, now the price amount has changed for the contract. It's going to be something I have to, you know, put the pen to paper and figure out exactly how we can do this and make sure that it's done safely. But again, the addendum states that we can cancel up until April 15th. And with the board's approval, we hope to have something put together for you because the price points are going to have to change based on the attendance and our, you know, the way that we structure our camp program. We have some additional costs on that end as well. So we just want to make sure that we cover everything while still doing safely.
Thank you, Matt. Any other comments? Hearing none, then we would need a motion to award the 2021 pool contract as presented tonight to American Pools.
I'll make that motion to award the contract.
Thank you, motion. Thank you, Sue. Motion made by Ms. Cummings. Would anyone like to second that motion?
I'll second. Oh, sorry.
Seconded by Mr. Shannon. Thank you, Ed. Ms. Cummings, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Kaplan.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kutsaradis? Kim, are you here?
Mr. Kutsaradis is having technical difficulty, I believe. Mr. Kutsaradis, oh, he's on muted now. Can you speak now, Mr. Kutsaradis?
Yes.
Sorry about that.
Yes, yes.
Sorry to interrupt.
That's all good.
Kim, did you? Okay, thank you. Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Okay, Ray Weldy, I vote yes. So the motion to award the pool contract passes with the vote of 5-0. Next up is item four on the agenda, the minor subdivision application for a lot line change for JDSH Investment Company LLC, 244 East North Avenue, tax map parcel numbers 21-012-301 and 21-012-302. And for those unfamiliar with that area, that is the location of the old Madrigal's Meat Store. I'll turn it over, I guess, to Mr. Mike Italia.
Thank you, sir. So the demo for this is going to be commencing shortly. We've already gotten DEP clearance and they've done this test of abatement to make sure nothing goes in the atmosphere. I expressed my concern of residents living in there with four legs so that they manage that control when they start demoing. We like to do it when it's cold so there's less issues. We don't want anybody scurrying out in the neighborhood. The applicant is on here. He'll be able to expand that. But what will happen is, you know, the neighbors will start seeing fencing go up and whatnot. And then any, you know, if there's any issues with things running out or whatever that they get missed, please just give us a call on us. No, we'll pass it along to the applicant. We're not expecting any issues. They did identify a family of raccoons in there, so I believe they'll be getting relocated and taken care of. The lot line change was presented in front of Planning Commission with unanimous support, support with the neighbors around as well. It's just two houses now instead of, I believe there was a plan for three at one point, so pretty comparable to the area. They'll be conforming lots. The no variance is needed. They'll take care of the improvements around there and, you know, the other sewer hookup. But definitely to turn it, you know, close one chapter and open another kind of thing.
I think the applicants in attendance, do you have anything to add to that? John, I saw you earlier.
Hi, this is John Deepassquale. I'm the applicant's son and also attorney. My dad, I think he is on, although I don't see his camera turning on now. I don't think we have anything to add to this application besides what Mike just explained. I don't believe three lots was ever part of our application. It was always true from the beginning. I think that's some correction I wanted to make for the record. But we have nothing to add. We're going to put a good product in this spot and we are happy to proceed. It looks like my dad logged on now. If he has anything he'd like to add to the application. You're on mute, Ed, if you want to.
No, I'm off mute. I'm good. Everything Mike said is spot on. We're locked, loaded, ready to go. We're excited about the project. We were, you know, again, we were never in three lots. I know that was out there, but I think that was a previous. And we're good to go. We're excited.
I prepared a resolution approving this. There was some tax issues and it's all covered in the stipulation. They're going to be paid when, boy, when the first house sells. The resolution preparation date in the bottom left-hand corner is 3/19. I made a correction in that it was a lot line change and the now there for applause. The applicant agreed to it. There you go.
Frank, does this resolution have a number?
It has the numbers. I don't know what the feedback is. It's terrible. But what happened is when you go to settlement, we get a bring down. Little company gives us the final numbers. They have, in order to get cleared, your, we will get that information and the applicants agreed to pay the taxes at that time when the first property sells. No concerns about getting the right amount.
Okay, so I have a question, Deb Kaplan. So is there any kind of, for lack of a better word, investigation to go how far back money's owed to the township from this property?
Well, I talked to Denise and the number as of March 4th was $12,075 for sewer. And the taxes, we got a title report which indicated 19 and 20 were due. And Joe was confirming that with the tax collector. But when we go to settlement, there'll be a title report and there'll be a bring down to get the exact amounts due.
Thank you.
And these fees are all agreeable to Mr. Deepassquale and your organization?
They are. They are. We, I mean, just for the board's background. I mean, we went into this property a little over a year ago. And from the lack of a better word, kind of got sideswiped by the seller. We had to make some moves after we invested some money to do our due diligence and spent some money on engineering to go in and find out that they couldn't transfer title. They were in a foreclosure situation. We worked out a deal with their lender. We bought the note. We took it through foreclosure, got it back, cleared up a lot of the judgments and the debt. We know that the township had the unpaid sewers, the unpaid taxes, and we worked with Mr. Dylan and Mike to talk about how to get those rectified and have been on this project for over a year and have worked diligently to get it to this point. And the agreement that we had to pay that at the first closing is instrumental to us because we've outlaid a ton of cash to get this deal and this project off the ground and get it underway. So we appreciate everybody's efforts and everybody's help in allowing us and helping us get this done. So thank you all.
Well, thank you. That's been an eyesore for many years and it's really, you know, drug down the look of that neighborhood. So we appreciate, you know, your involvement.
Well, thank you. We appreciate your help.
Thanks. If there's no further questions then, and I hope I'm not stepping on anybody's toes, but if there isn't any further questions, we would need a motion then to pass the resolution as proposed by Mr. Dylan.
Don't move, Mr. Weldy. It's Kim Kutsaradis.
Go ahead, Kim.
Yeah, don't move. I'd like to make that.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Motion's made by Mr. Kutsaradis. A second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ms. Kaplan. Ms. Cummings, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kutsaradis?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Shannon?
Mr. Shannon, I'll mute yourself, please.
Yes.
Thank you. And Ray Weldy, I vote yes. So the motion for the resolution for the lot line change at 244 East North Avenue passes with the vote of 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Look forward to working with you guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number five on the agenda is discussion with Jerry Clavers. And I believe Mr. Fenningham's here with him as attorney regarding a proposed site plan for Symphony Village on West Bristol Road by the railroad bridge.
Correct.
If I may jump in. Let me introduce, with me tonight is Jerry Clavers. There are three parcels involved. And with us also is Scott Orins. He's a partner with Ridgecrest Property that owns Symphony Manor. There are three parcels involved. The one on Buck Road that is Symphony Manor is Mr. Orins' property, again, the assisted living nursing home. Jerry Clavers entity owns 005 or 242 West Bristol Road. That's the 10-acre tract. And then he personally owns the 006.1, which is 157 Henry Avenue. That's a little bit less than one acre. The plan here, just in a sketch plan status, is that the properties are all zones R1. I traced the history of Mr. Orins' Symphony Manor and it has it has a nursing home, assisted facility zoning certificate of occupancy. And we propose, Jerry and Scott, who's on the call, proposes to enter into an agreement whereby the 10 acres would have eight structures that would be housing for what we refer to, I'll refer to as transitioning, transition housing. The Symphony Manor facility is underutilized. It's underused. So this is an attempt to get your reaction to a business plan that would cause a kind of combination of use, all in support of senior citizens or those who need housing and then transitioning to further assisted living combinations.
You mentioned 10 units or eight?
It's eight structures. Each structure would have eight units.
And it's got two floors, correct?
Two floors, correct. And the plans that we dropped off last week, I hope you all have, they show elevations as well as floor plans. And just to clarify, there's two different site plans. I want to make sure that you know that the protract plan, which is dated March 2020, is the current sketch plan. That shows eight structures on the 10-acre parcel. The one previously prepared by Brian Elias had one of the eight structures on the smaller Henry Avenue lot. We've moved that off and we've put all eight onto the lower tract, the 10-acre tract. I also want to point out, and I think I advised Mike and Frank, that there is an existing six-inch sewer line.
Eight inch.
Eight inch, excuse me, running from Bristol Road down southward that is connected to the Philadelphia Interceptor. Jerry already receives, you know, sewer bills and pays those, most recently in the first quarter. So the plan is to develop the properties in a combination use. You'll see the, what I'll call the bypass or access route that would be proposed from Bristol Road coming, swinging down through the 10 acres across the smaller one-acre tract, linking in with Scott's existing parking area on, fronting on Buck Road. It would also connect to the northerly parking area toward Bristol Road. And we just see this as a.
Utilizing.
You know, utilizing the entire tract. We know, we appreciate this opportunity tonight. We know that there has been other applications for townhouses, more density in the 10-acre tract. So we're trying to come up with a way to boost, if I could say it that way, Symphony Manor in combination with Scott and his partners. And let me just add, because Frank asked me, I do represent Ridgecrest and Scott Orins as I also represent Jerry Clavers. So we're trying to bring this all together and we just want to get your questions, reactions, comments this evening so we know which way to go.
Well, I had a question and you actually answered it for me, which was would Symphony Manor be able to handle the capacity? And you had said they're underutilized right now, so that wouldn't be an issue with Symphony Manor?
No, they actually wouldn't. They're supportive of this whole plan.
And I see this similar to what Christ Home does, correct, in Warminster?
Correct.
Yes, thank you.
John, was this the same property that maybe two or three years ago they were proposing building maybe 30 single residential homes on?
It was actually, right, it was actually up to 40 townhouses.
Forty.
The concern was with density. I'll tell you that in my analysis, under our one for single family with half-acre lots, probably the max would be 15 homes somehow, you know, with some maybe dimensional variances. And that would be like a buy right use. But again, that leaves Symphony Manor on its own. The consideration would be those interested in living in proximity to Symphony Manor wouldn't be buying single-family homes of the level or price that would work into that R1 buy right use. So they're the kind of practical considerations that Scott and Jerry brought to me and I've been trying to, you know, guide them a bit and. So eventually, just so you understand, if this sounds like it's a good plan, then Jerry and Scott will enter into an agreement where Scott's partnership will buy the 10-acre tract. I'm not sure whether there would be a request to make it one parcel. I'm not sure we want to do that. I'd consult with Frank and Mike. But the goal here is to transition this property to be a complementary use for Symphony Manor.
Thank you. Now, I remember back when it was proposed for the townhomes or single-family homes. Ed, you kind of weighed in because, you know, this was, you had spoken to some of your neighbors. It was in your area. Do you have any prediction on how this might be taken? You're muted, Ed.
Scott, can you hear all this? Scott, are you on?
Are we on mute?
Mr. Shannon, I'll mute yourself.
Okay. We can't hear Ed.
Neither can we, John.
Why Ed's trying to unmute, I like the use of the land where it wouldn't be taxing on our school district.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good point. There wouldn't be, you know, there wouldn't be schoolchildren in this uses.
Yeah, I'm unmuted now. I figured it out. So. Yeah, there were several different things, Jerry, as you remember lividly of that. There's. There was 32 houses and then there was 40 houses and then there was 15 houses and you know, you're. Dan tried to do something that didn't work and I know you've been trying to do something with this property for a long, long time. This sounds like, I, I, I don't have the, the final drawings with me, but it sounds like a great idea. How many, how many houses would be there? How many facilities or whatever?
Ed, there would be eight structures on the 10 acre lot.
Okay.
Each structure would have two floors and each floor would have four, four units. So a total of eight units, living units in each structure.
Okay.
Are they one bedroom, two bedroom? What's the configuration?
There are two bedrooms. Yeah. And just, I'll tell you, the planning is such that. The primary occupants will have visitors. The idea is to make it conducive to children or grandchildren staying over a bit. But just single couple or single person use is the plan.
And you go right from the parking lot.
John, who, John, who would be responsible for? I guess this is fully enclosed private property. So Symphony Manor would be responsible for, for snow removal and all of that on that property?
Yes. Yes. It'd be, be internal control. We, there's no plan to dedicate the, what I call the bypass road.
Okay. How, how does, how would that work underneath the bridge there? Right on Bristol Road? How, is that going to be an exit from, from the property to Bristol Road? Is it going Henry Avenue?
Well, that, that exit, there's actually two exits onto Bristol Road already that, that are, have been in use. Is that correct?
Yeah, yes. One right here and one right over here. Yeah. One over here, one over from Scott's property and one over there from my property.
Right. Yeah.
So. Do you think you'll have any, do you think you'll have any problems with the bridge and the exit from the property with the bridge there?
Turning, turning left, Ed? Turning left?
Uh, turning left or right because some, sometimes the traffic is pretty heavy back in that area. So just curious about it more than anything else.
We haven't had any reaction. Jerry's saying, no, we hasn't had any problem with that. And. I mean, again, it's the, the answer might be in further planning it that we have, we have access to the parking lot for Symphony Manor on the north. That's a double spread route. We, we can talk about whether there's any reasons to control the traffic flow out, in or out on that, on that further westerly access area.
Yeah. Would, would that be one of the plans to, to exit and entrance from Symphony Manor in and out? And get further away from that bridge. I'm a little concerned about the bridge and the prop, and the. Traffic that comes through from there. That's all. The further away you get from that bridge, I think you're, you're going to be better off is my thought.
We'd be certainly open to, you know, considering that and making sure it's safe.
We did discuss that. Sean and I did discuss that because in order to open up the Bristol, another access into Bristol Road. They would need a highway occupancy permit anyway. And I think PennDOT would be reluctant because the line of sight is so short with the tunnel there. That they would, we would lean more towards that main entrance.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that. The further away you can get from that bridge, the better off you're going to be.
Not debating that, just pointing out that that access, Mike, is already there. And that was a prior nursery use that was.
Busy, yeah, but PennDOT is going to want revision there because you're going to, you're, you're changing it from a nursery or whatever to housing. So. That, that would be, they may, may trip a traffic study. Joe Fiaco would probably, you know, he would get involved to look at that. It may cause you more harm than good to use that.
We're certainly open to that. We're certainly open to that.
Right.
Yeah, well, that property is right, right, right behind my house. And I think it's a, it could be a very nice use of that property. Because there's a lot of retention basin down there and there's a lot of water that accumulates in that area. So we want to be careful about that too. Not, not today, but for a new, a new piece of property being used in there.
Understood. Yep.
Hey gentlemen, this is Kim Kutsaradis. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Question, what are your plans with the, with the acre parcel on Henry Avenue? Is that planning on being any kind of entrance or exit?
No, they're just the bypass road will dissect it, come across it, but they, on the plan, there's a building, but that building's been demolished.
It was a house.
It was a house there. The garage that is shown on there is also existing though, but that'll be demolished and taken away. So that'll be just open land.
So Henry, Henry Avenue will not be used as an entrance and exit?
No, no.
Okay. All right. Cause there are properties there.
Have the, have the neighbors, any of the neighbors on Henry or not that there's really many along Bristol, but have they been approached to any of these ideas yet? See what they have to say?
Not by me. I don't, Jerry, no, we haven't.
That's why, one of the reasons why we have no, no use of Henry Avenue at all.
Yeah, we're not going to, we're not going to go there and. This is just, we're at my description, we're at first base. We, we haven't spread out yet. Just getting your reaction.
So this would, you, you would hear more from them if you went in front of the planning commission, the conservation district and then the zoning board.
Right.
But we, we have no intention of using Henry Avenue at all.
Yeah.
No.
Okay. All right. Very good.
I think that answers a lot of problems, Jerry.
Yeah. We're not being, we're not being asked to vote tonight. Tonight was just a little peekaboo to see what's being planned and get your general reaction. So I think, John. They've gotten that. Does anybody have anything further to add?
I do have a question. How many, just, I'm just curious, how many square feet is each unit?
I got it right here.
We have that. Hold on.
Wait a minute, I have it in here.
Jerry's scrolling through the plans. I saw, I saw it myself, but I don't know the number.
It was on here, each units somewhere.
Frank, it's on there or Mike, it's on there somewhere. I just can't.
I can't find it.
Well, you could send it to us, John, and I'll skip it to the board.
Yeah.
The units are big, a big unit. Yeah. If you look at the last. Let me go to the last sheet.
How many people in each unit, Jerry? How many people in each unit? Is it for single, singles?
Probably it's two bedroom units, Ed. Two bedroom units there. I think each one, if you look at the floor plans that you have there. The, every unit. Has two bedrooms, good sized bedrooms, two baths, kitchen, area for washer and dryer, separate room. Separate big closets, kitchen.
Would this, would this be for the benefit also of the people in. In the home that's there? Symphony Manor?
It's, excuse me?
Would they, would the residents of those new properties be part of Symphony Manor? Or they'd have. In there?
Yeah, the idea is to transition. Long-term plan is those residents would transition to Symphony Manor.
It's just like what we have now. I live in Christ Home myself. I have a residence in Christ Home and we, we live in our own unit there. And they take care of everything, but we of course take care of the inside. And then we can use the dining room facilities in the other units there from Christ Home. And all the maintenance for the units there is done by the staff from Christ Home. This will be the same.
I know I've, I've, I've seen your house and it's really nice. And so this, these properties are going to be like your house?
That is correct. And also the way we're taking care, our architect did a great job, Bernie Elias there. Because you, you look at the building, they look like a, like a larger house. And then the bottom unit there, let's say you entered, entered and exit to the left of the house. And that's, it's all parked in there. There's not one step involved. When you go from the parking lot into the units there and the ground units there, you walk straight in. You don't take no steps. The upstairs, the parking area is on the opposite side of the building. And then you walk again, fight from there. Because we took care of the, we, we utilized the contours of all the land that's there now. And you'll see that on, if you study the, the drawings, the floor plans and the elevations. It's, there's no need for elevators and no need for stairs. People can walk directly from the parking, from their cars, directly into the unit. This is what I think it's so unique about this particular facility.
It's, it's pretty, it's a pretty well-planned development. I, I'm impressed with it.
And then the people would, would be from, from, from the Symphony people would, would have their little transportation buses like we have at Christ Home. And if people want to care for going for the meals, people can cook themselves too. That's what we do. But if you care to go get meals there at the, at the two big dining rooms and two big kitchens that are. In, in, in Symphony there, you can do so. Okay? Medical facility, the therapy, the therapy area there. You have a religious room for people to go to, you know, for different face.
Okay. Does the board have any more questions?
No.
No.
I don't have any.
Thank you.
And each one, each room, each unit also have a, a, a outside balcony. People can sit.
Yeah, we're good.
John?
I'm in Florida. I haven't seen the, the plans yet, but I'll take a look when I get home.
So let me just thank you again for this. This is very, very invaluable. I will consult with Scott and Jerry. And Mike, I'll probably be in touch because what the next step will be. An agreement and then an application on both of their beheads. That's where I see this going.
Let me know.
Okay, great. All right. All right. Thanks, folks.
Thank you very much, Ed. You're in Florida now.
Yeah. Just for a couple of weeks.
There we go.
Good.
Have a good night.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Frank. Thanks, Mike.
Next up on the agenda, item number six, award the 2021 Bucks County Consortium Road Materials Bid. I believe there are. Four different motions on there. I'll let, turn it over to Mr. McDonald just to give a brief explanation of the items that were. That we've bid out and what we're making motions on.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. So this is regarding the 2021 Bucks County Consortium Road Materials Bid Results. New Britain Towns, it handles our worth and we thank them for it. I'm recommending that we award. The bid to the following four companies. Miller Materials, that's where super paved nine and a half millimeter. Wearing cars, which to you layman, that's the black top that your tires are on when you drive down the street. And that's actually 52 cents more a ton than last year. The second would be American Bytuminous Company for our cold patch, $142.50 a ton. And that's $6.60 more than last year. Third is Asphalt Maintenance Solutions Company for crack sealer, 79 cents a pound. And that's 11 cents more than last year. And finally, Eureka Stone Quarry for our two A modified stone. 13 and a quarter a ton delivered and that's 50 cents more a ton than, than the previous year. And we have our super paved 25 millimeter binder, base binder at $40.25 a ton. And that's a dollar 10 more a ton. So the prices have all gone up slightly. Contract period's from April 1st, 2021. To March 31st, 2022. And the total estimated cost for the, the materials is around a little over $16,000. So a slight increase from last year, but it's really not too bad considering. So I'm recommending we award those four companies the bid. Thanks.
Thanks, Mark. And, and according to the paperwork we received, this was bid out to six different organizations and this was the low bid. On all of them, correct?
That's correct. Yes.
Thank you.
Is this going to solve all of our problems out on the road? I'm being funny.
We're a lot, we're a lot further than Florida, I think.
Yeah, right. Okay.
Does any other board members have any other questions? Hearing, no? Hearing none then. Motion number one, we would need a motion to award the 2021 Bucks County Consortium Road Materials Bid. To Miller Materials, a low bidder on super pave, 9.5 millimeter wearing at $46.98 a ton. Would anyone like to make that motion?
I'll make it.
Made by Mr. Shannon, second?
I'll second.
By Ms. Kaplan. Thank you. Ms. Cummings, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Kaplan.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kutsaradis?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Thank you. And Ray Wildy, I vote yes. So that motion passes a vote of five zero. Motion two would be to award the 2021 Bucks County Consortium Road Materials Bid. To American Bytuminous Company, Inc., the low bidder on QPR cold patch, $142.50 a ton delivered. I'll make that motion. Would anyone like to second it?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Shannon. Ms. Cummings, your vote? Thank you. Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kutsaradis?
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. And Ray Wildy, I vote yes also. That motion passes with a vote of five zero. Motion three would be to award the. 2021 Bucks County Consortium Road Materials Bid to Asphalt Maintenance Solutions LLC. The low bidder on quick 9005 crack sealer at 79 cents per pound delivered. Would anyone like to make that motion?
I'll make that.
Thank you. Made by Ms. Cummings, a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Shannon. Thank you. Ms. Cummings, your vote? Thank you. Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kutsaradis?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. Ray Wildy, I vote yes. That motion passes with a vote of five zero. And our last motion, motion number four would be to award the 2021 Bucks County Consortium. Materials Bid to Eureka Stone Quarry, Inc., the low bidder on number two A stone. At $13.25 a ton delivered and super pave 25.0 millimeter binder at $40.25. FOB. Would anyone like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion. That Kaplan.
Made by Ms. Kaplan. Thank you. A second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Shannon. Thank you. Ms. Cummings, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Kaplan.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kutsaradis?
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. Ray Wildy, I vote yes. That motion passes with a vote of five zero. Thanks, Mark, for that update.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Getting those low bids in order. That is our last agenda item. I'll turn it over to Mr. Galdo now for the manager's report.
Thank you, Board Chair. Just some brief items. Township Cleanup Day were tentatively scheduled for the 24th and that would be starting at 9:00 AM. God willing. The sanitation rebates, again, it started around February 8th and it's extended to July 31st. Depending if the offices are still closed due to COVID, you would just please call the office. Esther Denise. Currently, right now, 323 rebates have been issued to date. It's actually basically staying true to form as in, as in the past year. The, the numbers are looking good there as far as the rebates. Basically the criteria, this was raised at the last meeting. It is on the website, but I will repeat it. The Lower South Township resident, you have to be, you have to be a senior citizen, 65 or 65 and over years old. You have to be a veteran, 50% or more than 50% disabled. And you have to be a homeowner for the entire year of 2020. And it's only applicable to the primary residents only. And then last is just a discussion on any potential. That would be requesting an approval going back to 1121. I'll leave that to the board.
Joe, I thank you for that update on the cleanup day and the, the trash rebates regarding the budget increases. Would you, what the board would like you to do would be go down the line for the department heads and then what the recommend, recommended. Percentage raise would be for those individuals, if you could do that?
Sure. As far as the Public Works Director, based. Sure. As far as the Public Works Director, uh, based off of his performance evaluation, uh, basically it was. It was above average, basically, um, typically exceeds expectation and outstanding, uh, at times. So, uh, that would be for the Public Works Director. Um, so his appraisal was very well, uh, the, although he's not part of this particular issue, because there hasn't been a, a formal decision. Um, the Father Marshall's Office was conducted. He also was basically, um, meets job requirements and exceeds expectations as far as, uh, Chris, uh, Chris, uh, Chris, oh, I'm sorry, the administrative assistant. Um, she basically meets requirements or exceed expectations. Um, as far as Lisa Adams, um, and that was, uh, written up. Um, let's see, that was basically meets job requirements. So they were the four individuals that were reviewed and, and had a performance evaluation on.
And what, what is the recommended salary increase then for twenty twenty-one?
The budget, the budget range baked into the, everything's baked into the budget. You could give as little as, is, is what you feel like. Um, and the, basically, we put in around five percent on a given year. So just in case, if we need fluff, um, in another line, it, it is there, but up to five percent is the max. Typically around four or four and a half, or four percent in good years. Um, with this being again, like you said, a, a, a challenge year, it's up to the board to make that determination. But I just wanted to give you the performance evaluation part.
Okay. And are there other employees that are, um, that there are proposed raises for?
The other, the other two are the, um, police administration, that would be the lieutenant, as well as the chief.
And?
I do not, the, the township manager does not do their performance evaluation.
Okay.
And that's been the past history, from what I understood.
Typically, in prior years, what have they received percentage-wise?
Typically, typically, they receive the contract amount plus one percent.
Okay, thank you.
What's their contract amount, Joe?
In this year, it is three point five percent.
Although. Plus one would be.
Plus one? Okay.
And then the plus one.
Although those, those administrators aren't part of the, uh, bargaining unit, correct?
Yes, they're not part of the bargaining unit. The bargaining, and let's say for the Teamsters component, the average in, the average increase basically was almost around like twenty-one hundred dollars. For the, uh, the average police, uh, uh, police or patrolman, uh, the average raise was, uh, three thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars, I believe, off the top of my head. So that was, that was typically the range that we had for the, uh, CBA.
Thank you. And we also.
That's already negotiated with the police department, right, Joe?
Yep, it's part of the contract, sir.
Thank you.
And then I guess our last one is, we would have to, um, make a recommendation and vote on a raise salary increase for the township manager, correct?
That's it. The board deems it. I'm fine.
Okay, okay. Um, I mean, I, I know the other board members have comments. If I could lead off by saying that this year is not like, to me at least, it's not like other previous years. Um, in other previous years, we've doled out raises of three and a half, four, four and a half percent. Um, while we had, um, income rolling in through the earned income tax, our ratables and our business mercantile tax. This year was not a year like that. I mean, we lost money every month on the EIT. There are employees that have been laid off. There are employees that not only were laid off, they went and had sought employment elsewhere and that will never come back. And, um, somehow we were able to get through all that without a, a tax increase again, which is a credit to our township manager and finance director. But I'm not in favor of a three and a half or a four, or four and a half percent increase this year. Um, and I, my feeling was that, uh, the, the employees deserve a raise. But I think the raise should be more, uh, subdued, and the raise should be more in line with what the economy has seen for the past year. Um, and I don't think we have the luxury of forking off things like we have in the past. This is, you know, if things pick back up and next year we're back to normal, fine, but that's my two cents worth on it.
I'm in agreement. Um, I was going to comment as well on, but I don't want to, I don't need to really repeat what you just said, Ray, but they were my thoughts exactly the same.
And it's a shame. I mean, there are employees or department heads that forfeited part of their salary last year so that the township, you know, could remain more sovereign. Um, many, many people did that. And, um, you know, we would like to reward those employees. Not only that, they came to work through all of COVID's up and downs, and they showed up for work every day. I just don't think we're in a position to, you know, I was thinking more along the lines of two point five percent, which is somewhere in the middle. It is a raise, but it's not the raise that everybody was looking for.
Well, I think, I think the people that have stayed on and stayed working and, you know, continued to do the job and working for, you know, two, three people at one time. And I think they are certainly entitled to the two and a half. Uh, I don't think they would be expecting any more than that based on the situation that we have. But those are the dedicated people that we have in the township, as far as I'm concerned. And, uh, I think they would be very acceptable to the two and a half percent. And hopefully in the, in the future, that, that, uh, their concern, their work ethic, uh, allows us to do something for them, uh, at the end of this problematic area that we're in.
I, I agree, right, that each, each year, each year is a separate year that we're looking at. This year, we're looking at it in the circumstances that we, that we have in front of us. Um, doesn't say what next year will be.
Yeah, I guess unfortunately, we don't know what that's gonna be, you know?
Kim, would, would you like to, you have anything?
I mean, I'd, I'd like to, you know, I'd like to give everything to all of our hardworking employees. You know, I, uh, I am definitely on the same line with the rest of the board. I do have to apologize, though, with the, uh, with the technical issues I was having earlier. I was hoping that I could, uh, talk about one particular department head. And, uh, it never did come up with the issues I was having tonight. And I'm a little torn now on whether I should, um, on, on whether I should have, uh, Mr. Mr. Galdo's, uh, vote not lumped in with everybody else. Um, I just, uh, I wish there was a way we could go back and have a, an executive session right now. I don't think there is a way.
Kim, since you were cut off, I shared your thoughts.
Oh, well, thank you.
Yeah, we were made aware of that, Kim. So, you know, if that's, if that's your desire, um, we would then need a motion to award, uh, the department heads as described by Mr. Galdo, uh, with a two point five percent raise, except for Mr. Galdo, and then we could vote on that one separately. Is that agreeable?
That's agreeable. I would just, I wish I had the opportunity to speak to Mr. Galdo about it, though, uh, which, you know, obviously, we, we didn't tonight.
Okay.
Uh, could we, uh, could we, could we vote on everybody but Mr. Galdo? And then tomorrow, maybe I could have the opportunity to speak to Joe personally. And then we could continue this at the, uh, the next meeting?
That, that would be up to the other board members. Do the other board members want to delay the vote or, or sever the vote tonight?
Everybody, I just.
I, I'm okay if, if, um, if Tim wants to vote on Joe at the following meeting, and then we'll vote on everyone else this evening. I'm fine with that.
Okay, because it would be retroactive anyway, so.
Exactly. Right.
Okay.
And it's definitely retroactive, though?
Yeah, the racist would be retroactive, yeah, till January first.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so then we would need a motion to award the department heads as described by Mr. Galdo, um, with a two point five percent raise this evening, retroactive to January first, two thousand twenty-one. Um, and then, uh, separately, we'll, we'll speak about Mr. Galdo's, um, status at the next meeting. So would anyone like to make that motion?
I'd like to make, I'd like to make one comment first, if I may.
Sure.
That, and that is, Joe, are you okay with this in, in idea? Joe? Joe there? No?
No.
Joe Galdo?
He is there. Right? He's the G.
I, I think he's muted. Mr. Galdo, unmute yourself, please.
Well, I would hope that he's okay with that. Uh, he's been pretty good for that stuff right along, so. I, I, I didn't want to interrupt the, uh, the vote, but I just wanted to ask that question.
It's a shame Joe's not.
Yeah.
Turned on.
Did anybody make the motion? You suggested it, Ray. I don't think anyone made it.
The motion has not been made.
He's had a technical difficulty. He just came up to my door stating that he's okay with that.
Okay, good. Thank you, Peter.
Sorry, sorry about that.
Okay, so then the, the, the motion again that someone would make would be to award the department heads as described by Mr. Galdo, except for Mr. Galdo, um, a two point five percent raise for the year twenty twenty-one, retroactive to January first, two thousand twenty-one. Would anyone like to make that motion?
I moved, Ray. I, I made that earlier, too.
Thank you. Motion made by Mr. Kutaratus, a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Shannon, thank you. Uh, Ms. Cummings, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Kaplan?
I'm a yes. However, they're not all department heads.
I always think of that.
They're not all department heads.
No, it was the department heads as described by Mr. Galdo, right?
But they're not all department heads as far as employees. They're not all department heads.
Okay, then I'll amend the motion to, uh, the employees and the department heads as described by Mr. Galdo. Um, we would need a motion to award them the two point five percent raise, except for Mr. Galdo.
That would be fine. Go ahead, Kim.
I'll move.
Thank you. Made by Mr. Kutaratus, a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Shannon. Thank you, Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kutaratus?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. And Ray Weldy, I vote yes. So that motion for salaries, um, is approved with a vote of five zero. Mr. Galdo, is there anything else for the manager's report?
Still, uh, having technical difficulty. I, I think that was the last item on the manager's report.
Okay, um, something came up recently, um, that we waited until the manager's report to bring up. Um, the board became aware recently of, uh, some incidents that were reported to us involving the Parks and Recreation Director. Um, as part of our due diligence, those incidents were investigated. Um, that investigation has been concluded. The board has been apprised of the results of the investigation in the last two executive sessions. And, uh, as a result of that, uh, the board is prepared to act tonight. Um, the Parks and Recreation Director, as everyone knows, is Mr. Gilbert, Matt Gilbert. And, um, based on the information that was presented to us, um, I believe the board, someone from the board, um, would make a motion tonight to act uh, on the, the incidents that had been reported to us, if I have that right. Um, if any board members would like to weigh in, now would be the time.
I would like to make, uh, a motion that, uh, we chastise him with some time off. It was a silly, stupid thing that he did. Um, he's done a good job, in my opinion, uh, ever since he's been in that position. And, uh, i- if we come up with some timeframe when he would be chastised, uh, I would agree to that.
Mr. Shannon's made that motion. Would anyone, is there anyone that would second that? Hearing none. The motion, no, it's not seconded, so the motion fails as presented. Um, I'll make a motion myself that, based on the information that was provided to the board, um, that the board would move to terminate Mr. Gilbert's relationship and employment with the township, um, effective this evening.
I'll second that emotion.
That motion's been seconded by Ms. Kaplan. Um, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Cummings?
Uh, yeah.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kutaratus?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Shannon?
No.
Thank you. Ray Weldy, I vote yes on that. Um, that motion then moves forward with a vote of four to one. Uh, last, next up is supervisors' comments. Um, we'll go down the line. Ms. Cummings?
I want to thank, uh, Jeff Yaco and the, uh, Youth Advisory Council, uh, Devin, Ray, and, um, Carol, that were all, sounded like they were at the meeting. Um, the effort was working within Shammany Coalition of Youth, um, and I think that, you know, we can provide our youth and, um, you know, getting that word out to everybody in the public. Um, it sounds like a wonderful venture for the township and the, you know, the youth within, um, the Shammany Lower South Little Town. Um, so thanks again for, you know, um, being there and presenting that to us. Excited to hear about the pool contracts. I'm sure that is a, um, that it'll be a long-awaited, um, event for, for everybody listening and, um, hearing about the pools, um, hopefully opening, um, this summer with the dolphin and the, uh, furtive ball, furtive bar pools. Um, just want to let everyone know that have two nice warm days coming up and enjoy them. I think it's gonna get cold again, but there's warmer days ahead. Good night.
Thank you, Sue. Um, Mr. Kutaratus?
Yeah, you know, I, uh, I want to talk about something that I brought up in the past, you know, about local family business in our township. I don't know if anybody has had the opportunity to see the Lower Southampton spirit, but we have another great family-run business that, you know, I personally know the, uh, the owners of, Joe McElvein Tree Service. I just want to give them a, a big shout out on thirty-three years of service. Not all here in the township, but, you know, Joe's been a resident of the township for, oh, gosh, probably thirty-five, forty years. And, you know, had a business here in the township for almost as long. Uh, so, you know, I want to commend him for all his years of service. And, uh, and, and lastly, too, another, another family-run business that has been here forever, uh, just had a terrible, terrible loss. Uh, Town and Country Kennels, good friends of mine, the, the Looney family. Mr. Looney had passed away the other day, and I want to send my deepest condolences to his family, his friends, his customers. Mr. Looney touched many, many people throughout all his years in the township, and, you know, he will sorely, sorely be missed by me and, uh, and many others. My, my deepest condolences to their, their entire family. That's it, Ray.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Shannon?
Yes, thank you. Uh, Mr. Fiaco and his concern about the children is magnificent. He's really done a nice job. Uh, he's, uh, keeps moving forward with it. And, uh, I think he'll make a lot of support with that. Um, the pool with Matt, uh, I think that's a, uh, it should be a good thing. He's negotiated that, uh, right up to now. And, uh, I think it's, it's gonna work out really, really nice. Uh, Mr. Clabbers is finally, uh, coming to some ideas about his property for, it's twelve acres, and that's almost behind. Mr. Clabbers is finally coming to some ideas about his property for, it's twelve acres, and that's almost behind my house. But I think his ideas are pretty good at this point. Madrigal's, the Deepak Squaw people, they sound like they're doing a, doing a really nice job also. And Mr. Looney, we know him from the Fisherville Business Association. He's a longtime member. His son is now also a member, and he's done tremendous job for the FBA and obviously for his business that he has in, in Lower South. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Ms. Kaplan?
Yes, I'm very pleased with what the Youth Advisory Council is doing for our youth, especially with this project that they set before us. And I thank them for doing that, and I think, and I'm hoping that there's a lot of students that would be interested in it. I've actually passed that along to an organization that is a club within the interact and early act, so hopefully, they will get involved with it as well. And I'm looking forward to hearing some good news from the Youth Advisory Council on this. And I'm very glad that we were able to give them the flyers that they requested from us. And color, too. Thank you for watching.
Thanks, Deb. And, and I, I think the Youth Advisory Council is hit something good here because, you know, as a parent, everyone's parents and, and as an educator, kids will listen to other kids. So this, this podcast idea to have kids produce a podcast and present it to other kids about the dangers of vaping and opioids and drug use and smoking and things like that is a fantastic idea, and I think it's worth a great shot to thank them for their dedication. I'd also like to thank the Lower Southampton Veterans Advisory Council. They recently donated five hundred dollars to Operation First Response. Operation First Response serves America's finest veterans and our families with personal and financial needs. So thanks to the VAC, the money they take in from the Travis Mannion Run for Heroes, and so it goes right back out the door to other great organizations like this. I'd like to thank Tracy Siler Morgan again. She's a local realtor and a Lower Southampton resident. Tracy's worked tirelessly to collect food pantry donations, and yesterday, she was able to drop off her collection of donations to bequeasting middle school's food pantry. The food pantry was wiped out. They were badly in need of food. Tracy put together a drive yesterday. Thank you, Tracy. I was also contacted by Mr. Stuart Lakerneck, a chiropractor from Trevo. Mr. Lakerneck is going to run a similar program. So if you have a chance, you could drop by his office and drop off something for the food pantry. Yesterday, Mr. The Township Manager and I took a ride around a, a couple areas of the township, being that spring is coming in eleven days, and, and it's been seventy degrees. It's supposed to be close to seventy degrees. And we took a look at winter's damage, and we found a lot that had happened. We found abandoned cars on the road with inspections expired four years ago and no tags. We found cars parked in backyards that were sinking into the mud, rusting hulks of trucks on people's property, boats that were uncovered, fences that had come undone, and the fences were around in-ground pools. Presented a danger to children and animals who could get into the pool or the current realm. And we're working on that. Those, those rider grounds are going to continue, so we're hopeful that people can clean up the mess that winter caused. And that's all the comments I have. I neglected at the end of the, the motion that we took for the Parks and Rec. And I would like, at this point, to address the board and ask a motion to be made to authorize the Township Manager to advertise for the Park and Recreation Director's position as soon as possible. We're going to need a new Park and Recreation Director, and the season's coming up, so I'd like to get that advertised as soon as possible so that we can develop a group of applicants and begin interviewing and get that position filled as soon as we can. So would anyone like to make a motion to direct the manager to advertise the Park and Rec position as soon as possible?
I'll make that motion. Deb Kaplan?
Thank you. Ms. Kaplan, a second?
I'll second that, Ray.
Thank you. Seconded by Ms. Cummings. Ms. Cummings, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Shannon?
No.
Thank you. And Ray Weldy, I vote yes, so that motion to direct the Township Manager to advertise a Park and Rec position passes with a vote of four to one. If there aren't any further comments or any further business, we would need a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
I'll make that motion. Deb Kaplan?
Made by Ms. Kaplan. Thank you. I'll second it. Ray Weldy? Ms. Cummings, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. Ray Weldy, I vote yes. The motion to adjourn passes five zero. Thank you, everyone, for attending and getting to business on it. We had to get done tonight. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.